That were referenced in that question, that's the only one I've seen over $300,000. That transfer. Now, and we'll come back to this in a second, but I have copies to show you of the fire equipment that was purchased out of this great money that the city got. All right, um, there was a, wanted to make sure we looked at all the Amazon purchases, so I've been specifically been checking all of those. I think in the little mini audit I did, I had researched all the ones. So yes, there are some, as on purchases that were delivered to Ben's home address or one of the district's address, and I traced all those out and seeing where the equipment is here at City Hall.
So let me ask you a question here. So when you do your auction, you, you take, I guess, the ledger of the city, it says we spent the money, you tie it to an invoice, and then you tie it to an itemized receipt, and if it involves equipment, then you go and find that equipment?
Basically, what I learned from is the bank statement.
Okay.
Not the accounting.
Okay, not, out of what came out of the?
Out of the money.
Okay, well, that's probably even better.
Why? That's a good question, but yes, so I, I, you know, I take the first check in the bank statement, I go blind to pay bill, I see if it's properly approved, if it's a debit card transaction, if there's a receipt, and then I, if it's a check, I see who signed it, make sure it's a pocket note, identify who was supposed to sign checks.
Okay.
And then, you know, if any of those items are missing, I would have to make a note.
But, but you always tie the, the itemized, I guess, receipt to the article?
Yeah.
If, if there's an article, or if it's a duplicate, obviously it goes under a budget.
Yeah, yeah, I matched, we checked them out to the amount they pulled in.
Okay.
We didn't overpay it.
Yes, so I took the bill line tour, and he got to the next door, and looked at a generator, and looked at other items that were?
Right, for capital, capital expenditures, you actually tied the capital to the expenditure.
Right, and a lot of her over there, um, someone over here, and someone over the desk up front, and pick me through a list of the ones that were bought, okay, because that's one of the questions here, and I'm going to put out the invoices so you guys will see them.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to get clarification on that. When it's a capital item, you actually have to go find that and record it?
Yes, I have serial numbers matched the receipts. I looked at serial numbers.
Okay.
There's a tractor there, we bought a tractor.
So what if we had three iPads that were purchased? How would you identify the difference between? You just see the three iPads?
The only three iPads, and we bought three iPads. Now, if we bought three iPads and didn't find two, then it would be an exception. Okay, and I wouldn't, they'll tell you which one of the three they bought, because I don't even know, well, invoice, well, there may not have.
I would assume the itemized receipt would say, here's the serial number of the object.
Because I wouldn't, yeah.
I would assume.
No, I don't think.
Okay, on that, all right.
All right, so that was the Amazon purchases, you know, we did buy a lot of things on Amazon, there are technology supplies, office supplies, I think all these nameplates, all kinds of things. Um, was questions about the payroll, and, you know, the, they use direct deposit, but for some reason periodically, and I'm going to fill your report in a second, Monica just couldn't get it to work, somebody couldn't get the ACH part to work until they wrote checks. And there's actually one payroll where, one of the three employees' checks went through the direct deposit, and the other two, they go by checks. It went specifically through the whole, from October 1st through July, in the bank statements, to see what payroll checks cleared, and we'll start doing lists, and there's a, there's just one set of payroll checks every, now, in the accounting record, which is one of the reasons I don't want to go by the accounting records, it does show more, because Monica, for whatever reason, created, created them and couldn't get them both through, so she created them again.
And wrote a check number next to it.
Or something, but, but one of the problems, and I, I talked with Brooke about this, and I talked with Ben about this, so we kind of, going to have a new policy on bank recs going forward, is right now, there's over $100,000 of outstanding checks, checks that the accounting system says were written, had not cleared the bank, and I can look at the old, if someone could duplicate this, you can find, on the same day a check got cleared, she just entered it twice in the accounting system, she didn't ever void it out.
They can.
And included in there are some payroll checks, which is why if we looked at the accounting record, we would think some people got paid more than once on it specifically, but I, that's why I go by the bank statement. And I, I spent a lot of time, you know, making sure that there was only one payroll every week.
So you said there's a new policy going forward, what is that?
That is, at the end of each month, when, in this case now it's Brooke, that's the bank rec, you know, one of the goals is to get it all reconciled, to get a little zero up here that says that all works. The next step is, you have to review the uncleared checks. All right, if we're doing July, and we got some July 20th checks outstanding, well, that makes sense, it's close to the end of the month, but if we're doing July, and we got a check from Jim that hadn't cleared, let's go figure it out, let's just ignore it. And then even more importantly, is on the deposit side. If we, if we're doing a July bank rec, and there's a July 30th deposit that's uncleared, that could happen. There's a July 15th deposit that hadn't cleared, something's wrong. You duplicate it, somebody stole our money, or what, but you can't just say you're done just because it says zero up here at bank reconcile.
So since we've talked before about how much money is coming in and out of the City Hall, would you recommend that we have somebody who's qualified in charge of the funds?
Oh, I hope that that's considered at this point. I think, you know, Brooke knows how to do the bank recs, and she knows to look at that, and then what I want to do, and my first option, you know, then will have been, review that outstanding ones, but I have some cities that say, some council member volunteered, I'll come in at the end of the month, all of those outstanding checks, and see that it makes sense.
Is there a way that we can post this online so the city can see what's coming in and going out?
I would assume so.
Yeah, at, at this point, it is, it's all public.
It is now?
Yeah.
But if I don't want to use the counter, they're in the process of cleaning those up, and I think they have to work with the, Steve, where Steve is at the computer company.
So the council will remember that we had this conversation once before, and I told you that we had to hold, not you, the council, I'm just saying council here, that we had to hold the financial report because Monica had left ghost transactions, transactions that should have been voided out, and they weren't there. So, you know, this is an issue that we've been aware of, it's something that we've been working to try and get done, but it never stopped occurring, so pretty much every single pay period, we'd end up with additional transactions that would have to be voided, or removed, or due to checks, or things of that situation. So this has been an ongoing getting fixed, it's not one of those deals where we're like able to say, okay, now we're going to be forward, we're going to have this done, it's been a constant adding to it as we're cleaning up.
Now, in working through all the payroll, one thing did come up, and that is, many months ago, maybe as many as six months ago, Monica stopped making the tax deposits to the IRS. And unfortunately, I know, if you're familiar with the EFPSS system that the IRS uses, but she has to log in a password, and it's not going to give it to us. So now Brooke and Ben are going through the process of having to reset the actives, and I don't know if you've worked with the IRS, but they're not the fastest people in the world. And they get really upset if you send them a check, if you don't use the EFPSS system, they get really messed up.
They'll probably get upset if you don't send them anything also.
Well, they will, and that's exactly right, but unfortunately.
Send them something without any record, they're going to get more upset.
Well, they're, they're going to lose track, and they're going to get accredited into the wrong place. But unfortunately, with the IRS, you know, we might be, you know, two quarters behind in our payments. They're so behind themselves, they don't know. So one day, it's going to kick into their system, and they're going to spit out a big old notice, you guys are going to get a big old bill, and there's going to be penalties. But unfortunately, they haven't figured it out yet, you know, try me tomorrow in the mail, you get a letter.
Back to this routine of what you're doing, but i- if we get stuff and pay back the stuff, will there still be penalties for not paying?
You can ask to have them obeyed.
Right.
Yeah.
We'll see what we can do.
Yeah, it's their problem. But you're going to be shocked at how big those penalties are going to be.
I know.
Be on a basis for $3,000 approximately a month, so if they charge you a 10% penalty, it's going to be granted off for each month plus interest.
What's it, and we haven't done that for how long?
Six months. I think six months, it's, I can't really tell until we can't get into this EFPSS system. If you can get in there, you can check the history, you can see what's been sent. But when I look at the bank statements, they're last three or five months.
You don't see that.
So this process was automated in our new finance package, so we cut down and relocated what came through the state of risk distribution, payment to retirement accounts.
Like TR, TRMS?
Texas municipal retirement system, uh, the IRS, the Texas Workforce Commission. So the system automatically generates the reports and everything you do, you just have to log in and make the payments. So that's the part, that is, the, the transaction was generated, the payment was never made, and it was never posted in the system. But if you look in the system, you can see that there are the calculations were done, the amount that they created, it is, the, the final step was not paid.
Right, one login and one, one draw and electronic bank transfer or whatever. And so our wayward employee has all that documentation, and is not provided at that point.
Well, user admin passwords, those are the, yeah. But honestly, with IRS, I don't, I wouldn't want to use, I, I'm pretty sure when you, when you signed in, you're basically saying, I affirm that I am this individual, and that I have, so we're doing it the right way.
I, I think the, the PIN that you have to have is like the city's PIN, it's not Monica's. She was here so long, she's probably the one that got it initially, but I, I wouldn't be that concerned. But you got to have a PIN.
Regardless, we're having to go through a process to get access. To re-initiate your access.
Okay. All right, so Ben, I'm going to keep and throw up that first sheet, please. This is basically there, that's just all the payroll checks. The first column is the ones that were paid by direct deposit. Those are the columns of when checks were written. But if you look there, you see there's, there's not every week, there was an extra payroll in November, which is when we paid the long debit, which you'll see up there was $100 for Ben, $712 for Monica. And 36, there's one there every week. We'll see there, um, on February 20, or February 18th, Ben's check went through on the ACH, but the other two were indirect checks.
It's the total of that is less than what normally is per week?
Well, the left total is when they were direct deposit.
Right.
Because in the bank statement, they go out as one or not.
Right, oh, I see, so his payment, 1341 is.
But that's typically, if you look up, well, that's typically what he gets. First check was this higher because of the auto files.
Yeah.
Now, the direct deposit doesn't vary because I think it's Brooke out, she was out, so she doesn't get the same check every week. If she was out, then you would get the direct deposit of them, the first one of the month would be the same, if they're not because of other employees. And this is the net check, that's not the gross check. All right, so I don't, I didn't see, you know, any duplicate payments, accounting record says they're on par. All right, back on the list.
Was that accounting record published?
What kind of record?
The accounting record that shows all the duplicates, was that published on the internet?
Um, I pulled that from?
No, I meant by somebody else, was that put out there in public space?
No, so I pulled that, and I pulled that report before we did it in February, on the, we had some things in there, the details not shown for, for that, it just showed the total, this is how much had been paid to Ben, how much had been paid to Brooke, year to date.
That was published?
That was published.
Okay, and of course it had all kinds of duplicates in it?
Yeah, but the, the detail that would make up all the duplicates, that is, that, that's not just published.
All right. The next item on the list was a request for a vendor list, and Ben indicated me that he published the vendor list.
Yeah, I sent it out to the, our council on?
Um, for all employees getting paid, were the people getting paychecks are Ben, Monica, and Brooke, or any other payroll checks for all employees or other people?
This option in the book?
October 5th, put the invoice.
Oh, this, okay, these contracts, I'm grateful, thank you, all right, that's why there's no check.
Okay. What is Josh doing? He's making. There was a question about the charges to this Calahara Resort, this was one of those that we talked a little bit about previous on the mini audit that I did, those basically were charges where, you know, everybody was, or a group of people were going down to? That's Ben.
Me.
That's just one person?
Oh, that's one?
Okay, that's the one when?
Yeah, it's attached to City Manager.
Yeah, so according to Ben, I can't verify this, but Ben, you know, gave Monica instructions to reserve him a room, and it didn't happen, so he found that out, it was too late to get a reserve or room at the conference.
That's the TML.
That's a?
That's for the, that's the conference for the council members, the Calhary. The Calhary was the Texas City Manager for the, the Texas City Managers Association Conference, and that was in June.
But that was a reserved room, and it was in, that's where they held the convention?
Correct, they have a, they, you know, they bring in, I don't know, seven, eight hundred city managers from one Texas, and they book a hotel that has the ability to house that many people, and then provide the conference room, the conference space for it, so you're going to see those things showing up at like the Gable or you're going to see it at like the, the Great Wall Lodge, you're going to see them at Calhary's, you're going to see them at huge hotels that accommodate, you know, that number of people coming to.
Which, which as I recall, was something that, that we said, we, when we originally hired you, that we wanted you to make sure that you went for the City of New Fair, or the City Manager went to these things for the City of New Fair.
And, and that's something that we, we talked about in our contract negotiation as well. Uh, the contract started on Wednesday and ended on Sunday.
I think I have a copy of the bill on that. But it, it ended up, ending up in total around $800, but it ended up being maybe three charges on the debit card just because of the way they did it fair, they made you pay so much upfront, and they take the rest, and then they take any incidentals.
And then credit you back, and get it much after. So we're just paying for the, so we just give the room, nothing else?
Oh, you'll see the benefit.
So part of my digging through all this stuff was actually reading the policies and procedures that the city adopted. The policies and procedures for travel state that we're going to pay whoever's traveling, they per diem. There is no actuals taken in our travel procedure, it's just per diem. So the fact that, that receipts are available for actuals, it is what it is. But the whole point is that we set up per diem and said, this is your travel, so whatever you want for that $85 a day, or however much it is, there's that calculation in there, and I remember all the time in my head. So the, the fact that we're digging through actuals here is, is kind of, I don't want to say a new point because they're out there, and it is what it is, but still, let's use policies and procedures, and are, we pay per diem, and then we pay the hotel.
I think that a lot of the citizens, correct me if I'm wrong, please, are okay with things like this if they know about, if, if things are transparent, so, does that make sense?
No.
Because that, that's kind of what is creating a lot of the problems, is that they don't know what money's being spent on, so when they hear about this or hear about that, you're getting all this.
Yeah, people turn, they look, and they go, what? I don't get to do that.
So if going forward, as you've said, new policies are going to be implemented going forward, maybe that, and goodness, will be one of them, that they'll be able to see what's being spent, where and why.
So, and maybe just even on the webpage, say, you know, council to TML coming up?
That, that just makes sense.
Yeah, okay, I can see that.
There were a couple of charges on there for some meetings.
And that's okay for the city to be covering?
Well, in this case, it, because we paid per diem, it was less than per diem. Yes, well, yeah, it probably was, yes, I can verify that, but.
So what?
Because per diem is, right, so it's, and then you get your audit on top of that.
Right, yeah, so there's a number of ways that you can per diem, one, you can say, my trip is this long, I'm trying to check, and I'm, it's in your bank account.
My life is guilty, because that's how they do it, they just, they, this is your, I sent.
Right, here's your money. So the city, I believe the policy procedures are written. Right. Here's your money. So the city, I believe the policy procedures are written that, written that way. So when I do per diem travel for my company, we actually square up. I spend the money on their credit card. And then we square up after it's all done. So if I owed thirty dollars or three hundred dollars, then I write them a check. The trip is over. And if they owed me thirty dollars or three hundred dollars, they would write me a check or put it in my paycheck. So, so there's a number of ways to go about that.
And New Fairview being a small, small tiny town, and we don't have a whole lot of money, the citizens may feel like we need to spend five thousand dollars to go to these things with spouses and food and meals and this and that. If we're Fort Worth or, you know, Dallas or, you know, a town maybe that can afford all those things, it's not an issue. But I think that may be what's coming up with some of the citizens.
So, and I'm not gonna argue with that position. Go ahead.
Okay. Whenever this comes about, whether our spouse is willing to go, one problem specifically was, if you're hurting the student review, then we need to pay his food. We need to pay for his portion of the room if they charge.
So the, the way it works, we're with the same regardless.
I thought my kids, that if there was additional funds that.
The only thing is, is the city does not pay for the food. So if, if you're gonna fly down, then you have to pay for your spouse's ticket.
Right.
If, if you're going down there, you have, we have a per diem. So we will put a check for the council members that can go and they'll, they'll get that.
They get mileage and so. And, and then put your dogs in there, then they get to go through. So, yeah. So truly, that's actually a, a good point. It is a small city and, and again, funds are coming out of everybody's pocket. I think that's actually an excellent point. I, I also think that we ought to recognize it, and I'm gonna say the council's job would be to educate the public. And say, in, in my opinion, I think this is extremely necessary for New Fairview to be on the public map, per se, at these conferences. To some extent, do we wanna go to all of them? Probably not. I think the manager's meeting is a very important one because it keeps New Fairview in the loop of what managers are doing and they know we're out there.
And I agree with that. And, but there's also a way to do it cost effective. There's ones closer. There's ones that maybe you can even take some of this stuff online. Does it have to be downtown Houston at the Hyatt? Is it, can we try? My goal is to try to save the city some.
Right, right.
And, and watch the spending.
So all of those classes should be probably done for our city online, but, but these, uh, networking meetings where all the city managers are in one place. You gotta go where that's at. You can't set offline and make your presence known to everybody else. So in that situation, it's something we, we need to communicate to the citizens, and I believe, now, y'all can have different opinions, it's a very necessary thing. If it's training for us, then I think we need to pinch pincies and say, we're not spending their money. So, you know, go online and do it. But there are a couple of events, I would say at least one, that's the manager's meeting, association meeting, that New Fairview needs to be a part of that.
So going forward, can we maybe condemn it to what's important and maybe what's not?
So.
I, I think that's a communication issue, and yeah, I think that's good.
Well, the opportunity for you to, to make that determination was when you negotiated my contract. In my contract, the council agreed that they would pay for me to attend the conference. It, it's, it's.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that council doesn't exist anymore.
Really, you approved that, that agreement?
I'm talking about when you got hired.
You approved that agreement in April.
That was the, the five-year agreement?
That was, was renegotiated, and there were new, and there was new information. And Brad walked through the council executive session, entire agreement.
Right. But Brad is not here anymore. We have new council members here now. He's here now. So I guess I understand and I was there and I remember, but now that things have changed and there's new people on board, we may need to just maybe revisit it again so everybody's on the same page.
So.
We can revisit it. I, I'd love to. In five years, we're very, very.
Yeah, at the end of five years.
I personally don't think we'd have this conversation if it didn't say result.
Exactly.
That's why citizens get upset. And I got, I see that and I just go, listen.
But they also have the ability to come and ask questions on their will. So if they ask questions enough for us to answer, then they need to go there and get an answer for themselves.
I think, yeah, we're talking about training here. I believe that the citizens want us to know how to do our jobs, how to do it better, how to do it more effectively. We can't do that state here in town. Yeah, we can do some online stuff. We know how well, online stuff works okay sometimes. But the networking, you know, I've got to get a look at the mayors in, in, in White County on a couple of different events at times. There's more that, that I get out of those meetings, just talking to the different mayors and the problems they're having, and, and I learned a lot there. Uh, and, you know, the T M L class that we took online, they were good, but if we could have a net thing with others, it would have been even better, rather than just one site. So there's, there's some pros and cons, but I think the citizens want us to be educated. And, and I think, I mean, we haven't had the budget to do it, so I don't.
Just because if it was maybe posted somewhere, hey, we're gonna spend five thousand dollars over here for a few days, just let them know where the money's going. I think that would solve a lot of issues.
I'm, I'm actually leaning on the conservative side. I, I think there's a lot of stuff we as council members probably can train without travel. But mayor's meetings and especially city administrators, I think those are important. But me as a local council member, I don't necessarily need to go wherever.
When, when you have a, a network of people, there are other council members that have been doing this for years, and you have a question, could you call them?
Not go faster.
So I even know this network of people.
Okay.
Without. Meeting those people and actually attending the classes. That's like the, of what we're talking about here. And I think what it really comes down to is, is value. So. We're talking about a five thousand dollars is what is budgeted for my professional development on any of this. Since, since I've been here, our team has generated almost a million dollars in grants. Has the city ever generated a single dollar in grants in the past? Do you know where I learned about that?
I was, I was at council, not me.
I learned about those grants to a large extent by networking with other city managers, by going to these conferences, identifying our resources and stuff. So is a five thousand dollar investment, or let's say we take the city council down there and, and throw in the fifteen thousand dollars, is a twenty thousand dollar investment worth a million dollar amount?
Like I said, it was very well-meet, but we need to let everybody know so that there's nothing.
So that's what the budget is. And if you look at the budget, we've had this conversation in, in community, uh, events, we've had this conversation. Every single, uh, meeting leading up to the adoption of the budget, we've talked about the, the items that are on there, and it says in big old letters, training dues and membership fees for city council. As a matter of fact, we had a meeting with the, uh, ballot grid and the, the other things that they asked, and that's, that meeting specifically was, we hear that you're sending the city council on vacation. And, and I, you know, please. What was my response to you about those, those ballots?
The kind of like, is, those ballots are put into a file. This is, if these dollars are in, I concentrate. This is why we're going. So. So who sees the work? And they get all the bunch of. But then once it's explained.
That's my one, that's my, exactly. So once it's explained, and if everybody knows ahead of time, then nobody's surprised with any of it. Just be transparent, let everybody know.
I, I think that's an idea. On the webpage, we'll just say upcoming council travel to.
Great idea.
For your benefit, and here's all the benefits.
So. See, I'm a little. What you guys are doing is you're writing checks that I have to cash. Do you want me doing that, or do you want me doing work? Because you don't get to have both. The, the, the thing about it is, is you have, you have a staff of three people.
We're trying to compromise, and you're right, there are three people. So is it hard for the interns to put it online like, whatever's coming up?
Well, so we have one intern right now, his contract's about to expire, and I've been being told, you know, from, from, from standpoint that we're, we're upset by a fifty dollar transaction for food. And that's the level of detail that people are saying they want to know exactly what I did for a fifty dollar amount. So, yeah, I, 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 I think that it is important that we have that conversation, because if we're talking about dollars being spent. When you say, let's do this, well, you know what, when I have a meeting that's coming up, it's on my calendar, I have no issue publishing my calendar if you wanna make it, uh, public facing. You know, whatever you guys wanna do.
We can do that.
That's fantastic. That's great. But the, uh, you know, the, 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 the idea that things are just going to show up on the website without somebody directing it and making sure that it's being taken care of and maintained. Those are all novels.
We spend a lot of money on our website, right? We have a few.
No, we don't spend a lot of money on the website. We're spending money on the development of the websites, but the manager's website is coming out of my hours predominantly and Brooke's hours predominantly.
So how difficult is it to add a?
Well, Scott, you have to write newsletters twice a month, or, you know, once a month, and you have to keep the website updated, and you have to write, you know. The admin package, and you have to do all those other things that are going along with it. I have so much time in the day to get things done. So what I'm saying is, is this is the plate. The plate is full.
Right.
What do you wanna take off the plate if you're gonna wanna add additional items to the plate?
So I'm curious to know. Why or how? I, I just, I think it's important that the website be updated.
It is being updated.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is, is the more.
So we can't add one more, one more item to the webpage? You're saying this is gonna take your whole staff on you? Days, you make the tower get cost dates here, Ben.
It costs an apple. So if you talk to.
Yeah.
You know, I'm saying, we're gonna go travel. We're never spending money to travel. It's twice a year.
It's, it's Amazon. It's, it's.
No, 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 no. I mean, you're that. Right. No, I'm trying to. I'm saying, when the city council is gonna go to whatever you're headed to, or, or now me, whatever we're headed to in October, we should post that on the webpage and say, guys, we're traveling here and here's all the giant benefits that, that we look to do. Here's the great things we look to accomplish. You can't put that on the website. I don't give a crap about meals and the fifty dollars. I'm not saying any of that. I'm saying what we talked about originally, the travel. When you go to T M L, here's what I expect accomplished. Here's the great things I'm gonna do. Two, twice a year, is there more travel than that?
I thought you were talking about where everybody was talking, all the Amazons.
No, we're sure all the travel thing, I thought.
I don't see a problem with.
Well, all of this, dude, no, 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 no. Your plate is full. I want you to work on exactly what you were saying. I'm sorry, I'm getting a little frustrated, because I put two boxes here, Ben. Why are you?
Talking about the, the bigger picture of what we're seeing.
Okay, no, no, no. Yes, it's back to the travel. Let's go forward.
Paying back into the honor.
You're on it.
Scott, we're trying to solve, solve all the problems.
Just good.
We'll have that a fee to do that.
Right.
Feel to be able to get.
No, no, no. All of this does not need to take up your power.
Bill, do you know when Monica was pulled from handling the money for the city? Do you know what month that was?
Overhandling the money?
Yeah. You, you, you referenced Monica, did this or then do this or whatever. Do you know when she lost control of any of these things?
Well, I'm, I guess I don't, no, I'm assuming it was when she was put on leave.
It was before that. I was just wondering if it was like four months before, three months before. Do we have a?
So that's, that's very easy to, to answer. If you look at the, the public facing statements that I sent to you, she signed all the checks up until she left. On medical leave. And then when she returned from medical leave, she was placed on administrative leave. So her last check would have been signed in July. Um. July sometime.
Alright, so she's responsible for the checks and the money up until it's off?
Yeah, up until the point when she was placed on administrative leave, she was canceling, uh, debit card transactions because she had two back reclamation offers on. So we were trying to purchase the, uh, ticket writers, the records. Um, and, and she was canceling the transactions. It took us a day and a half to figure out what was going on with the event. Because she was on leave, because she had control over every single electronic debit card transaction on this other company.
Okay.
So July?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. Sorry.
Alright. Alright, the next item. Just wanted to look at the invoices for large ticket items, so I think we have those one up here.
So, uh, the, the old mayor, Joe Max, wants everybody to know that Ben actually worked in February and March, um, or July, but go ahead.
You might as well see cancel checks.
I don't know who wrote what check. Nobody knows. He, I'm just.
Well, I know. It's very easy to check the signature line of the check.
Yeah, I mean, I've been through March, which don't try and sign a check, at least in March.
March.
I mean, that's all further I go.
Oh, so we know from March. You know from March.
Yeah, I know. At least through March.
Yeah, because money checks is different. So, but you know at least from March. So we'll go with from that until you know more.
And, and when you continue to dig, that's one thing you look for, when you sign a check.
Absolutely, yeah. Yep, yep. Alright, that's part of the.
Thank you.
Alright. So these are the large ticket items. All of them are small. So I, so this, okay, these are the, the two fire equipment that were related to the grant. And. So I mean, you have questions, you can ask them, otherwise I'm just gonna keep going through the pages. What is, this is the. And that's the fire.
So also, Ben, on, you keep a cap information on each.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, in, in case anybody wants to know, it's always signed and placed into a cap. Those numbers mean something there, right?
This was what I'm looking for when I say.
Well.
Somebody has been approved or not.
Right. But, but where the money goes is in the account.
And the account number is how it's coded in the account.
Okay.
This one, I, it's, is in there because it was specifically asked for, um. The city hires consultants to this group called Upward. And.
What is, what is Upward?
I can't explain. Basically, well.
It's a resume or an artist or people who do contract.
It's a freelance.
Freelance.
It's a freelance, uh, website. So basically, uh, the website acts as a facilitator to put together people that are looking for projects and people that have a talent to match. So in this case, we were looking at doing some updates to our G I S maps. I got a quote from our, uh, Chicago boat, they wanted twelve thousand dollars.
Who owns this? Is this your, is this what somebody said is your?
No, Upward is a huge company. They've got people from all over the world.
Something was posted with you a founder.
It's, it's a unique consult.
Oh, yeah. So with Upward, basically, it's kind of like eBay. You know, you go on eBay, you buy, you get people make comments, maybe you.
He's a good person to work for, or he does good work and you should hire him.
You get ratings. So when we started reaching out to do these types of projects that we needed, um, I use my account, because I have a long history. I think I've been using them for about ten years, and I've got a lot of projects that have been completed, and I've got a lot of reviews of people saying, it's easy to work with, it's a good product, has good projects of that nature. So I attract better quality talents than somebody who walked in for the first time and has no history and says, I'm looking for this, and please go buy it.
Okay.
So people with great skills are not gonna jump on that, and they'll go with.
Oh, I mean, they may, but ultimately what they're looking for is, is who's gonna, who's gonna pay the bill, who's gonna be easy to work with, and who has a history of people that they need to look at. Much like with looking at Yelp, you're looking at eBay, you're looking at anything else. Is there a review as to what it's like to work with this individual?
So we pay two thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars for this company to help you what?
To create maps like this. So this is a G I S map. This G I S map has.
And that company made this.
Well, that company facilitated a relationship with an individual named Mike Lynn. Michael Lynn is a G I S analyst. He created these maps. Upward acts as a facilitator. I provide funds to the web, or to Upward, they ask for those dollars. And then as work product is completed and released based upon milestones, funds are released for the work product that he's created.
So that money paid for the maps?
Correct.
Or individual export that, which then, as the work was done, it was funded for the people who did the work.
And you don't have, or have any part of that company?
None. It's, I think it's.
Yeah. Access through his company and the rating. We're buying access and rating through Ben's company.
Yeah, his company there is that Munich folks.
That's his company.
That's Ben's company. But.
That's who's being.
That's who's being billed.
Right.
But there were no checks written to Munich Consultants. The only check went to this.
Well, these aren't even checks. These are debit card transactions.
There were only payments to Munich Consultants. The payments are to this.
We're using their name and their rating to get this work done. We're using his, his name and his company to get the work done, so it's just invoiced through him, but the payments go obviously.
Right.
Oh, right. Right. So no payments are being made to you.
No.
It's, like I said, right there, the payments are from his company too.
Well, the invoice is received by his company.
Yeah, the account is in his company's name.
Right.
But the payment by the city was to Upwork.
And Upwork obviously charges a processing fee. That's how they keep the lights on.
Correct.
Okay.
Alright.
This was the first one. Release the, or second, I can't, maybe this, I think this is the second milestone. Um, this is. What? Oh, no, no, no. This is, so, total, the full set of maps is actually.
And again, let's compare this to if we went to our, uh, what do we call them?
If we went to Jacob Pope, I bet this out, they wanted twelve thousand.
So, so we're getting half or whatever this is. For us. For us. So I had, when we were city council, I had some big maps made. And I told them I didn't want to pay more than twelve hundred bucks. They sent us a bill for five thousand dollars. Dropped it on Monica's desk. I, I, the whole point you had at the end of the meeting was to tell, look, we need these maps, but I don't want to pay twelve hundred bucks. Or I can go to a printer and get, they say, oh, we'll do it for you for a good price. The next month, I find out there was a five thousand dollar bill dropped on Monica's desk. Oh. Yeah, this is a steal.
So these are all upset in front of. These are all the maps that, that are being generated in a PDF format. And the PDF format just basically gives us a one that we can put on the website right now, or we can print it out in a large format like you're talking about. Um, this basically shows the value, uh, parcel level. But the, the, the real, the real maps that were being generated are these interactive maps. And all the interactive maps are shape files. So when you're looking at this shape file, you can open this up, you can put it into a G I S software application, and this allows us to be able to provide information and data to basically the emergency services, nine one one district. It allows us to update the information to the county on parcel data. Uh, so all of these things are things that have actually been to the council. We've talked about this. The, the funding has been put in place. Part of the website we're talking about is integrating these maps into our website. Um, asset management, asset control is when things come online, they'll start to be added into this and, uh.
Well, moving forward, I just think if we're being transparent, just let everybody know, hey, I have a connection with this company. Money's coming. How's it look? We're yachts of it. Can we, you know, so there's no surprises and nobody's getting upset.
I think that happened on a, whenever we have council, something comes up, those questions could be asked.
Council should act, that should be.
They should come up, not, not later. It should come up there when it's been assessed. So we understand that the public was always inclined that they should get.
No, we're speaking transparency to be hit there.
But in the reality, what this comes down to is, is the council. So the council either trusts me to do the job. And if the council doesn't trust me, then you don't want me in the seat. Because the least that is, Ben, go take that bill. And here are the tools, resources to do it. And the tools, resources that the council provides me to do that is the budget. And you have appropriated those dollars and you've granted the authority to go do what's necessary to get to that point. So that's, that's what we're talking about. Ultimately, when you boil all this down, do you trust me to do the job or do not? And if you don't, then replace me. Because you shouldn't have somebody here that you don't trust.
Well, I, I think transparency also starts here with us. Uh, like the mayor said, it was our job to ask those questions. And, and did anybody ask those questions? And, and that becomes public record, but I, I don't know how you create a transparency page in. I understand what you're saying, Ms. Julie, but I don't know how you beat that.
Well, I think that the attorney had said a little, some time back, with other cities that he's worked with, he can go online and see the register, you can see the bank, the credit cards. You can see it all being spent in any city. So look at that. And, and he was saying that he didn't know.
We have that.
We made today, but we haven't for our time in court. And he said that he didn't understand why we didn't have that. So we may have an edge, but. But I'm saying going back, you know, everything. Is it our responsibility, it's just like me saying, well, we want to see the travel so that citizens can see it. And he said his plate's already full and he can't do that. So is it, then, does that fall under the.
Well, let's adjust that conversation. He was saying he could do all of this because his plate was full. I think travel was not.
Visual the conferences are and this isn't any of the conferences.
Right.
For the last month, my productive hours of actual work towards doing something for the city has been significantly limited because of all of the preparation of work for this and preparation of all of the papers and the documents and the files to get to Larry, and all the papers and the documents and files to get to the other people that have requested them. So yes, what I'm saying is, is there's this much time on the plate. And if you're going to add additional items to it, then even if it's just a little bit, Scott, something else that falls at the end or something else is going to become less of a priority.
Well, I'll come down here and set your office one day.
Alright, back, back to the. Alright. Let's just keep going down there. Theory between them is the same. There were no payments made. Here's something quick that we bought from tool experts. It's a, a machine. I shouldn't be guys aware of that.
Yeah, that was. Yeah, correct. I didn't look at that this evening. That was kind of cool.
And maybe one for, uh, A M P.
Yeah, welder generator, air compressor, pressure washer, trash pump. Ten thousand dollars.
That's not a bad price. If it's as versatile as that, it's a little.
There's a fly concept, which is some radar equipment that the chief has, that we have.
Definitely.
Re-attack construction, I think that was probably some.
This is the streaks, the.
The whole washout. The washout? What's he had, a washout? Yeah, I got whole three to wash out.
I'll show it.
The next one is.
Two words, John.
The asphalt roller. Are you aware of? You, you said something about, what we're going about, serum owners? Not there, not there. It's not there.
There is? Yeah. No, that's. Oh, okay. Just the inboard.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, well, asphalt roller is pretty hard. Sir.
Tractor loader equipment.
Remember, do you want to load for that?
Oh, I.
No. So, and then there's a deal where the city saves money because we are a big spender. Right.
Alright.
Think so, we're next door. Yeah, they're, they're behind a building over here. These are the, uh, replacements for the, uh, guardrails that have been cracked into on South Main Line Road. But they're heavy enough, you can't pick them up and replace them with one person. So once we get a, uh, a helper then next year, we'll have Josh, or in October, next fiscal year, we'll, uh, we'll have a helper come out and build those things installed.
Alright. Then, one of the requests was to look at all the loads bills. So I went through them. And I can't figure it out. I know what each little item is, but I don't see anything there that looks out of place. Fortunately, some of them are, are reading up. My age.
Yeah, I can't see you. I can't see you micro managing this because when he needs a sack of bolts or he's trying to fix something, he needs to go.
That's my understanding. I was, I was just going to loads to get this stuff. He brings the receipt back. And we're going to change the policy a little bit. We're going to have Josh artificially use.
Oh.
So now if we get a, get up to the load bill that Josh didn't initial, then we got to order.
Sorry, I'm looking through your notes here. Thank you very much for.
Lots of things are coming from your work. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, I'm sorry. I know it's on your business there.
Well, there you go. Yeah, I need to go through all that. Just have all in some minutes. No, see, that's excellent policy that we're going.
Yes.
Make somebody accountable for what they're saying.
Thank you.
Let's do that, um. There was a question about, uh, money spent at a car lot, a bean field. We left us getting a truck fixed. A city truck fixed there. Questions about these ticket riders.
Sure, let me touch on that one. So we got the truck fixed. Is there, did they went to Gainesville?
Uh, yeah, Josh lives in Gainesville, but when we contacted the local dealer, they ran a fake a week to get it in. And the one, the dealer in Gainesville could get it in that day. So we can have.
Yeah, that's a good answer. I'm good with that.
Questions about these ticket riders with system ID and you know, the, the, the mini audit. I think they're still sitting out there in Cristo.
Oh.
I think to me, you know, if there's other concern about that, it's Officer Shep.
Well, she's.
Yeah, the chief. Or I think that's the question there, right? Okay.
So in, in regards to that, Officer Shep provided, we, we basically said to Shep, tell us what you need, what you want. And she provided us the items. She provided us the information. Um, she gave us the radar guns. We let her select what they were. I brought them to the council. She actually came up and presented to the council. Um, we ordered them when we got them. We couldn't use them because they had to be installed into the vehicle permanently. So when we initially talked, I told her, so we had handheld devices that you would take with you, write the ticket, print it out at the end of it, at the end of the shift. You can maybe plug it into the document station and they would activate the software.
Okay.
What she ended up was ordering something that was software that had been installed onto the computer. It was in the store on, in the, installed into the system. So we don't have to really do that. Um, so we had to go through a process of returning all those items. And then going back to Shep's and saying, Shep, is this the one that you want? Is this going to work? And we finally got those that we wanted to, to work with and they didn't have any stock. So we were going back and forth and, you know, Bill saw the transactions of money going out and coming back and going back. Ultimately, we have other devices. The devices have to be linked up with printers with wireless that are in Cristo. As soon as the program is completed, they'll ship them back to us and they'll go to the service. So if the chef's order was, she provided us the, the list. I can, or the email. You guys could like the email of the items.
So she provided the list and that list was turned into a purchase order which went to this company.
Correct. She provided, yes.
Now, the invoices were changed?
The invoices were changed numerous times because we ordered the stuff. Uh, it was specifically given, she told us she needed.
So the purchase order shows exactly what she said to you.
Yeah.
What, and that would be the only question. Anything after that is trying to work out.
Yeah, we put her in touch with, so we have a software vendor and, and we said, hey, you work with her and what it is you guys need to make it work with our software. And then come back to us and tell us what it is.
Yeah, so the actual, you tell us.
Exactly. We, we, we didn't want to get into a situation where we ordered something that wasn't working.
And before you continue, somebody at Citizen wants to know what the twenty-five thousand professional fees is. Do you know?
Twenty-five thousand professional fees? Where have you seen that?
I don't know. Michael, ask her.
She's looking at the line item in the city administration budget. There's professional services.
Oh.
Do you know what that, what that twenty-five thousand dollars is for professional fees? Do you know?
I can tell you, Upwork is, is in there. But there's a bunch, it's basically for anybody who are, we're looking at hiring services. So, uh, we've had G I S technicians that have been paid out of there, had, um, technology, uh, people that have been paid out of there. But that's it. Again, that's a report that we can give to you guys pretty easily.
Okay.
The money the city spent for the garage floor. So at this point, I guess in terms of repaid the city.
When, when was it turned into, when, sure? Do we have, when it was turned in?
End of July. I, I don't know if you do that.
I know it's here shortly. After I was here last time.
Yeah, I think.
Beginning of August and August.
Maybe August. I don't know. End of July, beginning of August, somehow.
Alright.
Any reason why that took two or three months to get that turned in by the city to get to that?
Well, thank you. The explanation I have, which makes sense to me, as far as why the city paid for it, was we needed the garage floor fixed. We don't want to wait till we get the insurance money to fix the garage floor. So the city paid for it. Now, I don't have an answer to why the timeframe from that date to when the insurance got put in.
But the city was going to fix the door because it needed access.
Right. Yeah, you know, whatever was, Ben, the back end of the door or some citizen who would fix the door.
Yeah.
But you're right. That's a fair question is, you know, why is there this timeframe from that to when the insurance?
So we don't have an answer.
I don't.
Um, gifts or flowers to council members.
Oh, one more thing about the door. I'm sorry. Um, the statement was made by, by Ben that he was going to be taking a hundred dollars out of his check or whatever to pay for that. Is that, did that happen also or no?
Uh, it didn't happen.
Thank you.
Gifts of flowers to council members. I think there were, we covered this in the mini audit. There were two times that were flowers were bought and I had one of them. So on one of them, it wasn't Ben in order. They have been both of them. I don't, I don't remember now, but we covered all this in the mini audit. Everything at that time makes sense.
What I did tell you is, I said I didn't order one of them for sure. The other one, I recalled.
Monica called me.
But, but in all honesty, that is not, that is well within the range and realm of what I would have done. So I, I don't recall telling you to do it, but I very well would.
Well, this is verified, so council member, it was for the death and the counseling for the dollars. And I paid that little bit.
And I can't see why the city wouldn't spend a couple hundred bucks for a council member who's who had a loss that close. Now, if it had been your cousin, I wouldn't worry about that. So I want to back up to the door. I'm sorry I want to do this here and I'm really debating whether I should or shouldn't. So the city was going to pay for the door. The right thing would have been to turn the insurance in right then. I did the fault guilty personally, and this was my understanding. I would have said, you know, I'm going to pay for the door. It was told to somebody to make sure this happens. That person didn't do it. For whatever reason, now shame on this other person for not checking to make sure this happened. But the door was going to get paid for by the city. So the high road was to say, no, I'm going to fix the door. I don't want to, I don't want the citizens to be out that money. So I'm going to fix the door. So taking the high road was not the, actually the appropriate way. Should have just been to turn it in. I'm a city employee, turn it into the insurance. Instead, taking the higher, it caused that three month delay. Now, insurance gives you some period of, of, uh, turning in claims, claim period, area. So none of that was mixed. So the claim was turned in in an adequate amount of time for the insurance to pay. But, but the insurance paid it. So. So, okay, go ahead.
It was turned in after it was an issue. It was when, when it was paid by the city and nobody knew about it, nothing was dealt with. Then it became an issue. Everybody found out about it. Then it was said, well, I'm gonna pay a hundred dollars a month that I wanna check. I told somebody to do it. She didn't do it. So it's her fault, not mine. And that didn't happen. So, and then it got, months later, turned into insurance now that it became a thing.
Because it became a thing. Okay. I, I see where you're going with that. Alright, now I can't argue with that. Or I can't say in the appropriate way that it had been to turn it in.
Correct.
And, but the high road was attempted to take, and it turned into this fiasco. And, and so.
Whereas the city's getting paid back for it.
Right. Can't fault that, that effort.
I have a question. Most, most cities, my son was one of the cities, um, and he works for the fire trucks and all that stuff. And, and then we, we were discussing whether someone was paying or not. So what he said was, if a city employee hits anything, car, truck, building, whatever, the city pays for it. They did not ask them to pay it back because that is part of what is covered under the insurance.
That's what the insurance is for.
Exactly. If it's turned into insurance.
Okay.
But it was a feature. After a few months, it was, as we just said, it wasn't what happened.
Okay. But you have a claim period for any event that can turn it in. That's what we just said. After it was an issue, it got turned in. At first, the city check was written for it.
Julie, I understand what they're saying. What they're saying is, I'm a city employee doing work on city business, and I damaged the city facilities. The city's insurance would have claimed, and that would pay for the insurance.
That would be.
Whether or not the, the city's insurance pays it or doesn't, I turned in my personal insurance. My personal insurance is reimbursing the city for it. That would not occur in any city I've ever worked or, or any city that I'm aware of. What, what Scott was saying is, is I understood the circumstances because I saw what happened when I bought candy for the, uh, you know, Halloween. And, and the, uh, the uproar that that created in the community, the eighty-five dollars was gonna be spent on candy. Um, so I paid for the candy. That's why I said that about the, the garage door. I, in, in all honesty, I was thinking that I was being gracious in, in, in offering to do that. Because in most cities, the insurance would have covered it because I'm an employee, the employee has been covered by the city's insurance.
But it was turned into insurance as well, right? It was paid by a city check.
It would have been paid by a city check regardless.
Without insurance. Yeah.
Regardless, just like with these mash kits. If somebody runs into one of these mash kits, and we get their insurance, we're still gonna fix it. And then we're gonna try and get the money back. But if the person doesn't have insurance, do we wait and not fix that piece of, uh, equipment?
But you're saying, I know, we're gonna keep going into this, but you're saying, what if they don't have insurance? What if this? What if that? When the accident first happened, most people will turn it into insurance immediately, right? I mean, when I've gotten into one little car accident, and the first thing I did was call my insurance company. But not. I didn't say. I didn't have, I didn't have somebody else write a check for my accident. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah. I'm just saying, to pay for it personally, fail, and it turned into a driving accident. Well, you're right. There is a gap in there, so shame on you for not checking. And.
Alright, I, again, I, you know, it's a special, but we really need to move on. I think Ben's gonna show the Monica site checks up through July.
Best July twenty-eighth, um, being the last check.
Joe Max, the old mayor said signing checks, I guess, was a little bit different from handling all financial money. I don't know. I don't work here. I'm just letting you know what's inside. Is that all one of the same?
I mean, she's assigned on the account. She signs the checks on the account. She approves the debit card transactions.
Just for, okay.
For rejection. I don't, I don't understand what, what you're saying, so I don't, I can't.
So all bills have to be paid?
Yeah.
That signature pays it, is what you're saying?
So who would have generated that check or something?
She would have generated a check in the finance package, compared it to the invoice, and signed it.
Okay, next one is, has any money been spent on road repairs out of the bond or grant? I haven't gone all the way through that. I'm gonna have to come back to that.
Okay.
I can ask you that question if you'd like to know. The, uh, the three hundred thousand dollars of engineering and design work has been spent. Uh, and we just received our first invoice today for two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars for work completed.
From the contract?
From the contract.
For concrete embuppments and end caps, play.
Drainage work, J over, yeah, safety and stuff like that.
Looked at that. I saw that receipt.
I don't know if anybody went and looked at the work that they're doing. It actually looks real nice. The drainage, the culverts of that are really nice, cement edges.
Oh, I agree.
They look very nice.
Does.
Cool. Citizens should be very happy. The way I get the road down next year, I mean, it's gonna be running by.
Yeah.
The way I'm looking, six months.
Yes. Payback, that's what you're saying.
Years past. Dude. Because you can tell by looking at what's there. They don't care. They don't take care of it. So in a moderate portion of it. They'll bust it open. They'll be stacked up, drive over, down over, you know? Alright, the next item was plumbing repairs. Where and by which company? And, you know, only through March, but the only thing that I've seen that might be plumbing repair related with these, these loads bills and things. Or other similar things that Josh might have gone and purchased. And, you know, it's my understanding that, you know, Josh has the talent to do a lot of those, to lay themself. So we wouldn't, you know, have to hire a worker.
Yeah.
You didn't find any receipts for plumbers' hire?
Not yet. Through, through March, right.
Well, and freeze again happened February fourteenth. Freeze again. Every two hours, I'm busting water troughs with cat houses.
Next one was, has the city made any contributions to anyone? And without, you know, more specifics, I haven't seen anything through March that I would consider to be a donation contribution.
So we transferred three hundred thousand dollars into a mutual fund. Maybe that's what they're recalling.
Unless that was in your name, it wouldn't be a contribution.
Well, well, that's true.
I haven't seen anything, but if there's, you know, if it could be more specific, I'd help. Money spent for gas or use of non-city-owned vehicles. So again, two parts. One thing I've seen is, you know, when some of the city employees drive their personal vehicles. They get, they turn in a reimbursement for the mileage. Other than that, that's, that's what I'm saying. Those don't happen very often. But Ben has a, a auto allowance, but if he goes outside a certain geographic area, then that's not covered by this allowance. He would turn in a reimbursement for that.
He turned that in once a month, or is that why it's on the first check or?
No, I mean, that's, that's part of my contract is in, in allowance, because I, you travel internally all over the place.
Yeah.
Um, I've turned in, I think, one mileage reimbursement plan since then. And that was line road to, uh.
God.
Off. Yes.
Not confused that way.
How hard?
One thing I would add, from my experience as an auditor, you guys get to be patted on the back because the auto allowance, while it's being a key term, asks to be on the payroll. Don't know how many cities, I'd write that as a vendor check. And then have the IRS Employment Division come hammer. So, do you have an idea of that? That was a, a good thing. I also used, and I would basically do that. I'm gonna see the change, but, you know, I, I have some cities where the council gets ten dollars or twenty dollars every time they come to a meeting.
Well.
But the IRS says if you're elected official, ask to have taxes with them. Anyway.
Is there, um, somebody was asking, um, thirty thousand dollars spent in software along with the twenty-five thousand professional fees? Is it two separate?
I can answer that, people. I mean, I have, those are questions that are coming from the software, from the county general, and stuff like that. I love Ben to answer that question.
I mean, you have the receipt in front of you. It was for Waxes. That's not part of it.
I've seen a receipt for this Waxes that's fifteen thousand dollars. You'll get another invoice October one. Before came out of grand, I, 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 she worked, coded, but it recorded the software, right, maybe. And what was it? It came out directly? Of course, another Wax. Okay.
Thank you.
Who pays for insurance on non-city vehicles? Haven't come across anything through March. Appears to be a penguin for insurance for non-city vehicles. What was purchased for the barricades and where are they? So, you know, that was all to do with its washout. It got fixed and barricades. So that stuff is, that's going. But I think.
It's something that's a lot of weight. Putting comes out in front of, uh, the, uh, product, match kit, people stop and think of the comments and drive like lawyer. Putting my, yeah, covered it then.
Alright. What was the fifteen hundred dollars that take a break? Well, that was all for gas for the city equipment. It just happened to be, in this case, it was two months. Made it, if they had paid it every month, it would have been in line. It's still a little high.
Did you say fifteen hundred?
Yeah.
Fifteen hundred gas?
Right. This was over two months.
The trucks or the tractors and.
Yeah, the receipts are all over there. Yeah, I mean, if you look at that, it's, I mean, that, that period of time was, yes, high. It all happened. But it, but it's still three or four, five hundred dollars. Otherwise, I would say. The receipts are there.
I burn twenty dollars probably a month in fuel, just on my little farm, between generating the tractor and trucks and all them doing stuff. So.
How was the police guard gas? Who pays that?
They pay for that.
Yeah. Um, then the other thing that was asked for me to look at was a invoice from Best Buy for a hotspot. Seen the hotspot in the back. Switch there.
And that's, you said the hotspot, but.
Right.
I, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
The hotspot. It's, it's a cellular hotspot. You said it, and it turns a cell.
Well, it's, it's, you use it when the city internet goes down.
Okay.
Right. It has its own cell phone. It's a direct contact with a cell tower, and then it broadcasts a Wi-Fi that you can connect to. My wife, the FAA does that for my wife. She has a hotspot.
It actually is directly plugged in, so it has a ethernet connection into our.
Oh, so it goes through the internet?
Yeah, so it's, it's on top of our server rack, and.
Okay.
We, we've had, we, we, we have a, well, everybody does out here. We have a, a pretty tough time keeping internet connection. We don't have internet. Our phones are down. We lose access to our, basically, most of our accounting, everything kind of shuts off. So, uh, I think the third or fourth time where I was unable to do any work for three or four hours, we, uh, talked to, to our IT people. Said, look, we do some tricks, we're done with data, and they recommended that we put in a hotspot.
Alright, that's the end of the list of the things that we provided. And again, that's pretty much what I have for tonight. I'll give that just a bunch to go.
Okay.
Tried to make sure I got all these.
Thanks for all you're having for.
Sure. Are you got any questions, comments at this point?
So the only thing I'm reading is the, like I heard you were saying about the software, professional fees and stuff.
Yeah.
Looking to do that.
Yeah. Alright, uh, so that's the end of item A, which is the component, the concern, the risks, the guidance. Is it any? Anything on the regular session that you want to discuss in the work section? I think impact fee for Baron. We will go ahead and adjourn this, uh, need that eight twenty-five always in favor?
Oh, okay.
Only the most likely adjournment.
Guys, vote together. I'm saying over here, so.
If you gotta vote.
Are you on hold for adjournment session?
Yes. I'm scurrying behind and saying yes. Everybody staring at me, yes.
Alright, uh, anybody need a break for two minutes before going to regular session?
They're changing, oh, I did that if you want.
Okay, three seconds.
I don't know if you want.
Alright, let's, let's take a couple minutes, take part in the sales. If anybody wants to watch me, you can go out of home. So, for this city treasurer and, and board, to this council, they, my law has a horrible law. Rules that, and it, I don't think, that had to be, that, that, that state, the, the rest of the world just like.
So it'd be a really good bit of, uh, bills, then, how many soured? It's not something that gets cheap.
No. The average, uh, in Texas, yes, that was one in that, the average in Texas is two hundred and eighty something.
I kind of wondered that.
So that's the, yeah, that's the big thing. Uh, it's a DA or something.
And in that, like I said, they, they, it's one of the, the, the council and up to the city. They have to, they're, they're, and they.
Think that's a city secretary.
Yes.
For a city secretary. Why? It hasn't treated coming a city secretary. I said, no, but going and walking and getting somebody in here. I don't think they have the capacity there. Per se, who's, sorry. No, I thought you were suggesting, yes.
So, but now.
Yes. I think we should go look for one, exactly that. Man. So, so his hat, he can't say it personally, but so that's his, that's his secretary.
How did we do it?
So we get a hold of STR, that's how we find people who are there. They're a head organization. They're kind of sticking out this twenty-five hundred, we'll find you some money for whatever. Hey, guys, you know, we're not in session, so we have to, always, we're walking. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Let's, let's do, let's talk.
Okay.
Yes, they're all. They're all based, and I have lost them, so probably a good thing I said. Thank you, Mayor. You know me. I'll talk to a bill.
You won't be.
So it's post-aid. Who's in that arm?
Man, if I could just learn to kick my ass. I'm gonna knock you, Scott.
Bottle that, and I'll buy it from you, because. I'm.
Come on, man.
He said, he said, I feel like he didn't, not like he said that.
He's like, yeah, I wish you should keep matching.
Go, you get a pad in the back of the morning. You get a pad on the back of the morning. You get a pad on the back of the morning. We're gonna shut up and say. Well. He made me shut up and see, I was putting that.
Alright, thanks. Alright, so let's go ahead and convene the regular session. It's eight thirty-one. Uh, roll call, roll speaker. John, sir.
Julie, brother, city.
Scott.
All present except for Steve Pfizer. We will now. I will, against to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, wanting to under. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All in the title of this flag, I put it is truly as is on stage, I will go one indivisible. Alright, I have one form. Uh, that's Matt Spade.
Please, can you get a chair?
I'll share.
That's our quarter.
If you want to get that, here, here you go, please.
Hopefully, I think that then probably. And I did this, when, and I did after, was a bad part of the period with the. I think that be, I, I started to cut the bad side. Once passed up for bar, I live in the bar here a little bit. And then someday I want to build a house. But I guess one thing I didn't understand was on the roadway impacting. Would I be kicked twice? So, I build a bar, live in the bar. And then someday can build a house. They kind of along your line, John, because I think the question you should ask, you can build once for you were. You didn't want to change the impact fee because you're already living there. But. From the Texas code number six, act out of the long term. It says, new development means either subdivision of land. Construction, reconstruction, redevelopment for this is anything which increases the number of service units. So, I didn't know how the definition of service units was done. And I'm just curious. You know, the business can be. Chartered by this impact fee in translation. And also, there was in there how to do a subdivision for one year, there's a. People that's divided, people here, they're going to pay the impact fee. I didn't know that I was be something to them or not. Another question was the turn of the day, I just kind of asked whether it's a bank. And there's a service area. And we look at. There is, it's not supposed to exceed six miles. But when you look at our, our agents, we're considering service areas that are whole. So like if you look at the Kenny, the Kenny's got like. Maybe another of nine, twelve or thirty. And they have to do the impact fee for service area. So, it seems like there's a difference when you look at. Roadway impact fee versus if you water it that fee and wastewater that fee. I think roadway, roadway impact fee. It just says, roadway facilities and service areas, one in an area within corporate boundaries, little subdivision, shall I exceed six miles? If you, if you look at. Very. You kind of get to the page, it's Kenny. The roadway service areas, they're, they're util. Utility, you consider it as a, as a whole. And if you look at the very last page. Again, my fairies, boundaries. And they are a little, a little bit wrong. That, that service is miles.
So, Matt, look at this.
Yes.
This is a five mile radius. It incorporates the entire segment. That's not six miles, six miles with diameter. I'm telling you, so it's five miles from here and you're talking about five miles over this area. So I understand what you're saying. And, and for some of your specifics, we can get our engineers to respond to some of those.
Oh, yeah.
But the, the engineers are the ones that, that, that they're familiar with, chapter three ninety-five, are the ones that came forward, they did the, uh, proof of plan, they, they did the, uh, recommendations for it. And so, you know, we can, uh, we can give you access on the information you're asking for specifically. But, uh, you know, based upon interpretation of what they've had, what they've done with, you know, any number of cities. Uh, we are well within the, uh, the five, the, the six mile radius that you're talking about. For the, for the service areas that we're looking at.
No, no, not reading this.
That, that's, I understand what you're saying. I'm saying, I, I can get our engineers to, to respond to some of these things that you're talking about here. The council will not, you know, they were, they were looking at the, uh. What the, uh, their engineering.
You're saying it's six mile diameter.
Yeah, when you look at other cities, they sort of buy them as service area. I haven't included why. Does maybe that's why people are way off making progress, there's someone way down in the other corner.
So, ultimately what they're looking at is, is looking at utilization of the, uh, of the map. And so they're looking at where things are likely to be placed. So when you're looking at the, uh. Um, what we call shoe branch. There's going to be, uh, a grocery store, uh, plant, there's going to be a like CBS type store, this plant. And so that's kind of the point where they're looking at it, where is it? So basically, anything within five miles of that service area that they're looking at, all within the range of the city. So, they're looking at it at that point, but that's going to be the driver to it. So if you're looking at, basically, everything within the city limits is going to be within five mile of that location. So they're looking at that city center as the, uh, the, the primary service area. And the distance being calculated from there, not on the edge of the city, it's being calculated from that commercial center and the shoe branch. Okay. Because you're talking about, you know, you're talking about service units, you're talking about trips. So what they're looking at is the trips being generated and where the, the trips going to be generated to. And what are the traffic patterns going to be, maybe utilization of those roads and how are we going to get there?
That's, I mean, it's, I can look at it, just, just seeing strengths and others, so.
And, and they're obligated to do that because people are not going to travel that far to get to a grocery store. Right now, we travel to the theater or we travel past it. Um, so they're traveling much further than that, once the, the location is identified here. So there's, there's some very specific formula that has to be used in order to create what those patterns are going to be, how that looks.
So they basically take a supply center, grocery store, and they say, traffic use will come to this place and that's where I will make the use.
The main question is, I'm saying, it's my own job. I've got two bad sites, have I ever been, I mean, I don't know what keeps on. Is it on, do they come in?
Does everybody explain?
It's, it's, it's perfectly.
And that applies to individuals as much as to subdivision.
It applies to everybody.
So if you have a back operation and you pull the permit for a barn.
So barns, one of the single family residential.
If I have a living words in the barn also.
That's, that's a, that's going to be a, a residential, you know, that would announce the same family. There has to be some certification, what that would look like.
And then at some point, if you build the house, you move into the house. You pay an impact fee to be.
That's a question John had. And was it really resolved at that point? They said, you know, do we allow them to say, well, replacing this house?
Some period of another.
Hope you're replacing one house with another house.
Oh, okay, that's.
So. And then it just said in that line, which increases the number of service units. So, if you still have a family. Yeah, I'm trying, and the council is talking about it, they just have not come to any kind of a, uh, conclusion, I guess, it's.
It's been taking about two and a half years, but I think we're bad, one to, one building, I'm building another. So.
So, yeah, if, if the single family is there, we just move next, ten feet away to redo that.
So, what our engineer said though is, is you're looking at the full life of it, which means you're looking at the wear and tear, construction trucks and the concrete trucks and all those other stuff are with it. So, I think John was like, well, what if we say we're going to give you fifty percent or any kind of a discounted rate? As long as you're replacing a house with another house instead of.
I, that's a good point, so construction traffic to the second house is still wear and tear.
Okay. I'll also give my wedding first.
You don't live on my. Yeah.
Hopefully that's going to be taken care of that. Don't be right next to you.
Yeah. You're fixing to get taken care of in about ten years. Always, I'm never gonna get taken care of.
Alright.
Thank you, Matt, that was.
Is there anybody else talking?
No, that was it. Anybody else? That's the only list I have. Or again.
I'll start a quick question that came up. Um. Uh, previous meeting, when you were discussing the impact fees, um, speech that is I believe was shoe branch, not special bike.
That's correct.
That's right.
They, so shoe branch, they did a, uh. Uh, a lump sum payment of a million and a half dollars, which is no impact fee in place. And so, we basically came up with some numbers that helped provide, uh, consolation likes there exempted for the current development agreement. And so, yeah, they, they did.
I'm thinking that reason, so you did. Last one, one third, uh, question online, so just want to make sure it's clear.
It, it, it's not retroactive, it won't go back.
Oh, I do that, if there was a question, I'll make sure that was addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
If, if, if those ones, this one, or this building from the. You have a three thousand dollar, about an hour.
Man, I didn't have that work fee or something, they haven't pulled a bill for that yet, so.
Well, but they're, we have a development agreement, which specifically says, we are exempted from any, uh, future.
Fees, charges or.
The deal is the deal. And, and we made the deal and, and we did not have the, uh, listed place prior to the deal being made.
Questions either, I'm more careful. So, as you remember, as a county, we discussed this once before, uh, we went through this. I think that's a consent items. Um, we just get straight past, we'll get back, I guess. So the, uh, one thing that we forget, as a city, we, we felt to get proper notice, it was actually Matt who brought that up, so thank you, Matt. So, that's why we, we got that and went forward, made the, uh, the actual proper notice, uh, of the impact fees. And, uh, and so that's why it's back here on the agenda, we're discussing it. Okay. So is there any other consideration for doing this? Thoughts?
Are we on that idea, do we actually pass?
Well, okay, I did, yeah, two. We're gonna go out of open forum and then maybe we're going to close and sell it. Or we can go into the business and come back.
Okay. Okay. Well, just, we're gonna move back to that, that is. Uh, so, let's go ahead to the consent items and, uh, accept the July and August financial reports of the impact for its due due. Any discussion on that?
So, these are all going to be accepted as ones, they're going to be the minutes and the reports. If they want to pull them off, are you going to do the consideration and the change?
So, Mayor, I think you had to actually formally close the open forum. I, I don't, I didn't hear.
Doug, it's all the regular, they have to close the forum, we're gonna do the open forum to the, to the next out.
Okay, alright, I'm fine.
Any discussion on the, uh, financial reports?
I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, we need to fix our email.
I will see you Friday, so.
Where was I?
Is that what you're saying?
So, I'm, I'm more than happy to get it, help you get it set up, just bring your advice and we'll be getting set up.
So, I, I guess I can refrain until I've caught up. Do you need me to?
Not to, you gotta.
Yeah.
Julie, do you want, do you trust? Oh, look at that now, are you in this meeting or?
I mean.
You want to bring it back some other time?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I interrupted the meeting again, so.
You can do it.
Is there a password on?
I don't think so.
That was hard to talk. Probably is, to jump on.
Alright, do we have any discussion, I mean, we wanted to move forward, you know, it's paid, let me guess, is that something that's, you feel is necessary or the three of them have?
Yeah, you three go ahead.
You can go, go ahead and vote.
So I make a motion that we approve the consent items A and B as written.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
I'm one.
Okay.
Maybe we can go to the, you know, that, that's some other thing.
Yeah.
Alright, now, I'll want you to do this. Uh, we heard from, uh, Matt. And, uh, we have made. To the impact fees.
So first, I just could be opening a public hearing here, and if it's a speaking, speaking, it'll be, it'll be.
So is there any one else that need, that would like to speak on the adoption of the impact fees?
I'm sorry, is there anyone?
Is there anyone that wants to speak on the adoption of the impact fees?
He's opening the public forum, or the, uh, public hearing on the adoption.
If I speak, this is a better.
It helps me to, uh, so we're to conduct a public hearing on the adoption of impact fees.
The purpose of the hearing is to pursue the adoption of the trans. Which is a complete piece of proposed infection, residential, service unit is two thousand eight hundred twenty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. You remember the public has the right to appear at the hearing and present evidence for or against the advice contained to books. This is opportunity here to, uh. Speak with, uh, really. Anybody? Anybody online?
Nobody say anything online yet.
You just, you brought it up in the open.
Yeah.
If you. If we, are we ruling all this stuff or just discussing?
The, the next, you already have a public hearing and then there's going to be an action item to the.
Right, that's what we need.
Yeah, B, okay.
My question is this, when we get to the action item. If we, we propose it, anything like, like, for instance, we decide that somebody who has a pool, like they're building another pool, maybe we can use that.
Can update this at a later time.
No, what I can say is that for people like the young man that was, that's the problem for that, he's here, the only thing that's going to impact is the, 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 to, to move his house. New home here, the trucks and stuff, so they can cut it in half for people who already have a pool, where we're placing, as the long has, that's, that doesn't really.
So does that mean that this impact fee then becomes a? Item of discussion for each potential?
No, what, what you could do is you can say, we're going to adopt this right now, we can put it back on the agenda for, for you to say, you know what, we want you to take this and we want to change it, the language to say that we're going to. This is a team, unless you're replacing an existing unit per unit.
So maybe that would be such, yeah.
And if we're going to do that, we're going to give it an X number of discount.
Yeah. Alright, because that, because last time I put in there that if you were like, you turn, kind of build in a manufacturer house. And you're going to build a home on the property that we would like. Because that's, you know, a possibility for the community to get.
Get rid of the manufacturer's house, okay.
Yes, sir.
Oh, it's, it's just in this case, I wasn't hearing a warrant, just about a warrant.
Yes.
But would you rent the barn?
No.
No, it's just.
What's the, what's the? One address. What's the, one address, no family, no additional.
It's an office, and you didn't change it.
Yeah.
It just become an office, well.
No, that's actually an interesting point, you know, they're getting rid of one and hopefully building a better one, but what are they gonna do with the other, after they're a line on, I mean, they're just saying, these are differences, how do we break that up, do we wanna do that? I don't see, I don't see a problem, say, if you already live there, then the impact fee covers the construction, and you're already impacting the roads, I don't have a problem doing that, but if you've got one and you're building a second one, what are you doing with the first one? So.
I was gonna say, as long as it's not in the, which means, add to the rap, to the address. Right?
No. Would it land in the second address?
You only get to make an address if you request, so unless you're gonna disentangle the property, there's not gonna be another address issue.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
I mean, there's a lot of places where you've got multiple properties, or multiple homes on one property that is one address.
More than that.
They just hold that base, or will it?
Yeah, they could be that, sir, I feel, I don't know.
So, are you gonna, you're gonna hold a lot, Mayor?
I just think here.
They almost divide the consult with company that we are.
So, part of the, Julie, you did what, yeah?
I actually wait till I read it.
Well, first of all, they gave you the whole presentation on how it came up to be, uh, right from.
So, that's how, we have a happy.
It's a bad thing, but.
That's how it came up.
Came and presented how they derive.
So, it's a very specific formula that chapter three ninety-five outlines, and basically they look at the projects, and they say, okay, the capital group plans identified a hundred and seventy million dollars for the street improvement projects. And then based upon the types of developments, you have single family, multifamily, retail, basic service, these are what the, the impact fees you're going to be.
They said, here's the math, here's what you're gonna have to put into it in cost, and here's how many people you figure are moving into. So, it divides the cost for the new roads, like how many people you figure are moving in.
And what you're gonna drive requirements for the improved transportation.
Right, and there's some dry jamming there, and distance, and it's a neat engineering calculation.
Thank you.
So, that, that impact fee, just to be clear, where is it? It goes for.
It goes specifically for transportation improvements, so this will be a separate fund, goes on to come in and be spent on building the road, or reimbursing a developer who didn't wanna build the road for us. And we reimburse them over time, so it just has to be used for constructing the roads, or a, or a.
Repair, about repair, no. No, just new construction.
Yeah, okay.
Hence the seventy million dollars on new roads, okay.
It's about the impact that they're gonna have, and how do you want to convey for that.
Are there different impact fees? He mentioned sewer, water, do you have different impact fees?
We don't have sewer or water system yet, so, but yeah, sewer water system impact fees are commented in most cases.
Did we get the C and C's?
Still working on that, so Texas, the public utility mission, they.
It's a long process, I worked with the government and US Air Force, it takes years to fix something.
Alright, any other discussion?
So, public hearing.
Nobody's speaking, so, close that. Thanks, Matt, for your. Alright, so item B is to discuss, consider, and act on a resolution of the transportation impact fees.
So, I think, John, you had a good point. Do we subdivide some of this stuff, is there A and C under, how would we handle? I mean, single family accept this, or if you're gonna do this, or how can you do that?
It's posted, not, I think it's actually on the entire, the, oh. Well, it's not, it's, you could make the amendment, it's basically what we're talking about is a resolution to adopt transportation impact fees. So, we're adopting the transportation impact fees as a, as a, we're gonna have fees, but the fees can be changed by the council. These are the maximum fees that can be charged.
This is that calculated for?
Also, you could, you could reduce them, or have an alternative, but you, you cannot.
Well, I want a line on it for trial. I'm not gonna let. So, I, I don't know how. I'll put that on a piece later, is I guess what I'm asking, anybody got any ideas?
Like I said, this is something that the council can update it over time, if you wanna put it on the, the item for future discussion, you could discuss, you know, what would be this, this look like, we could look at other cities, how do they slice and dice it? I think what you're gonna find in most cities is they're not gonna slice and dice it, you know, the impact in there, whether it's a replacement unit or not, and it creates administrative burden, and it becomes, you know, well, why not me, type of situation, so, it, it's definitely asked, I don't wanna see that.
I think it's kind of excessive, but we all.
Well, this kind of gets rolled into the cost of new homes, and these are developed, right?
Sure.
You don't.
This isn't just develop, this is only impacting big developers, what if somebody wants to, you know, get a little thing of this, this.
Well, right, I'm gonna build a house, and there's cost of planning, there's cost of city, and my trucks, my trucks, my delivery trucks are gonna tear up the roads. So, who, who pays for that? Should they pay for me building that house? So, I see where you come in, twenty-eight hundred bucks is a lot of dollars for somebody who's just an individual, but it kind of goes into the cost of what you're. Well, I'm gonna build a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house with fees, and there's planning and all that other stuff, so I, I don't see it to be die excessive, I'm gonna fix the roads, I'll be.
Is there anything else that they have to pay the city for? Somebody came up here the other day, and somebody had to pay.
I hope I make it.
Yeah.
Right, somebody had to pay a building for a mistake, somebody had to pay to have a hot water heater, who got a fixed income, but then, there seems like we're feeding people a lot.
That's pretty common in the city.
Yeah.
So, so, are that from where we're at? We are substantially lower, I mean, you just look at this list that you're looking at right over here from standpoint of what they're looking at in transportation impact fees. Nashville is at twenty-two hundred, South Lake's at twenty, twenty-two nine, Flora Island, and everybody above, if you're looking at, you know, on the low end service areas to the high service areas, fifteen hundred to three, thirty-seven hundred bucks. On Prosper, you're looking at forty-five hundred to six, six thousand dollars. City of Fort Worth, I mean, if you're looking at the impact fees that they charge all in, you probably got them fifteen thousand dollars for them to build a, a single family home.
You also have to consider that New Fairview doesn't have a lot of trains, roads to get where you wanna go, and all these have got to be built from new. So, if, if people move in, they're gonna be on one single road, while all these extra feeders and collectors, and somebody's gonna have to build those, now, we're gonna push a lot of this on, well.
Well, the council said they wanna grow for paper growth, this is growth paper growth, I mean, this is the calculation of what does it cost, what's the year impact can be for a single family residential, or a multifamily or retail environment. That's the, that's the thing, do we want roll paper growth, or do you want the existing tax space to have to cover the cost of new roads moving forward?
Most of the time, this is paid for when they're built, built.
This is paid for really, building for, for, so they permit the property, permit.
I mean, I'm looking at my quote, and then, my builder hasn't been to the city, they estimated my fees for the city to be seventy-three hundred dollars on that.
Does it include this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ten years ago, I think I got a quote for like seventy-five hundred bucks a day, and I think we got off really wide.
But that's what, and they're, they're in city and building this, and that's what we estimate my city fees to be, seventy-three fifty.
So, the, the house, building permits that people are paying, the building permit fee that people are paying for Gotham Ridge, you're talking high four thousand dollars. So, even if you took this and added into it, you're still less than seven thousand.
So, it's, it's kind of the cost of building now, if he's gonna build a barn, I don't think he, this will send him, does it?
It might have a small. Well, if he builds a barn, it has a living unit in it, that's a service unit, that's gonna be something that.
Those people can't know too.
Correct.
Open up.
But, like, has the price, so. I hope they don't.
But you know, that is a, an outside multifamily, so, yeah.
So, that thousand square feet is, is that retail space, or is that parking?
The three thousand.
That's a retail space.
Permitting. What you're getting.
So, why? So, you're giving it a cover at forty thousand square feet?
I bet, when I, when I worked for Icarus, we built a movie building in McKinney, our impact fee there was the next, was the biggest thing, we had concrete and then chill, and then, it's about sixty thousand square foot, so.
Well, concrete trucks tear up a lot, and every pad that goes down has concrete, has big concrete trucks show up, and they tear up a lot, so. Now, I also have to go very far, because we have a big Z project, so.
It's getting closer, it's starting to look like it, concrete.
So.
Then I guess maybe you'll leave it aside, it's just the cost of having to build a house?
I mean, I'm happy about it, but it's.
You are being quoted, so.
So, I had to sign the contract. There you go. So, I'm gonna, so, he's gonna have to pay a contract, an impact fee for building his barn, and is he paying the same impact fee to build the house?
That's a, that's close to.
Yeah, I'm just reiterating, because I held on his mind, so.
Well, I think that's something that as a council, we should look at discussing for sure, what are some of the exceptions that would make sense?
I agree.
And we can do that, you know, again at a later date, but, you know, we, it needs to be earlier, later date, so we can make sure that we have it in place before they might be back to take.
The other thing you can chat is, is Max may tell you today, oh, that's the only one living there, and then Max sells his house, and that, so it's a stop, and stop that's it up. So, you know, good intentions really are only good as long as the person is, is there, lives up there.
Right, your point.
Yeah.
Excellent point, so. My good intentions always go as far as what I do.
So, both of these as maximum impact fees, is there, do we have a motion to adopt these fees? As stated, one more question, okay, so these are, these are the public statements, so what, minimums or experiences you got?
This is just the maximum fee you've been.
Oh, oh.
So, there is no, now, what, what was passed last time was when John made the recommendation that we will give you a fifty percent discount, or cut, if you're replacing a manufactured house, a sticked house. Then, he said, well, and the council approved that last.
So, that is a line on this impact fee.
Well, that's, the council, again, would have to vote on it and make that a change, that's what, what John recommended.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Somebody just asked, what if something happens to their house and they have to rebuild, like a fire or something like that, will they have to pay that fee again?
They're definitely, yes.
And if they don't have insurance? They're probably not rebuilt. Follow along, now, if you can.
I would like a warning if you guys agree to maybe have, be able to see if the, if the situation is different for different people, like, that's a different situation, so, I don't think that, it just needs to be knowledgeable. If somebody has a different situation.
If they make them to every, every house in the city.
So, every house gonna be a different situation.
Well, there's everything, you're going, you did this here, you did that here, and so our council meeting will be occupied doing that.
I think. My, I bought three parcels of property, and I tore down one, I'm gonna build another one, so, I shouldn't, I shouldn't pay it, I mean, that's, that's.
I think, yeah, if we leave it to loose, Julie, it's gonna create a lot of assets for us. That's not to say that they're not worth it, but there's only so much we can do.
You're gonna have a line down the door, coming looking for a disco.
And, and the roads need to be built, because the more people move in here, four oh sevens it right now, we're talking feeders and loops around New Fairview and other different roads, is where that money was calculated from, so.
Well, this, again, you know, this is B to help take care of roads, roads in the, in the community that we more than have.
Rock, they don't have to bother. Yeah. You know, I.
So, the state does pay for some of that, like somebody's saying, F oh, four oh sevens, oh, by the state, so we don't pay to fix that.
That's the state.
But again, this one. Is not included in the capital group.
Wow, these are the feeder roads.
These are the, the road to the front ways and the yellow roads.
So, yeah, somebody's gotta improve those or build them, and, and I don't wanna charge them for it, because we're already here. But now, if I'm gonna build a bigger, better house, then I could pay fees that come with it. I think John made an excellent point about mobile homes to break. Alright, so, I will make a motion that we adopt the impact fees, maximum impact fees as stated, putting out there that an exemption would be to remove a manufactured home, and replace it with a stick house, with a foundation home.
With a fifty percent discount.
With a fifty percent discount, I'll make that motion, now, y'all have to agree with it, we can continue the conversation, don't think that I'm trying to shut down the universe with this, I just wanted to put that on there.
I second.
Conversation still goes on, we don't have to vote on that?
We ready to vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Four. We have. Alright, the item C of the business is to discuss, consider, and select the mayor pro temp for majority vote in the city council. Providing that the mayor pro temp term is one year, providing that the mayor pro temp retains the right to vote on all mayors for the council. While fulfilling the duties of the mayor, so if I was to be out for whatever reason, mayor pro temp would step into those, those roles, responsibilities, and also retain the right to vote as.
At least a voting room, there.
I think that's a different one, for the likes of it, but the motion's got, he'll be voting.
I think you should do it.
Okay, we have two motions.
Talk for yourself, come on, you can do it.
Second, John.
Okay.
It's John.
So, all in favor of John as mayor pro temp?
I.
I. Stop that little fair.
It's got you in trouble.
You could second me first, to think of that. Yeah. Quiet, over there.
Now, you're thinking about what you got yourself, please.
Alright, well. Congratulations, John. Alright, with that. Alright, with that. We have a motion to.
I made a motion, we're very.
Honestly, outside of an email to everybody, but we've got some, some other things that we need to discuss, we'll send out an email, and then we'll get it on for next agenda. So, go ahead.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we adjourn the.
A second, 9:11. Proper time now.
Aye. Aye.
All in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Can you give the minutes electronically? We give the minutes electronically through your city email account.
Sleep inside.
So, please wait, because we're still waiting on people to, yeah, but. We're still waiting on the.
Yeah.
Wait for me. We're just waiting for.